And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the July meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Before we get underway, there's a few administrative things I need to take care of. First, I'll call your attention to the fire exit that is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you'll be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a common orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevators, use either the north or the south entrances to the building. Meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record and minutes. So when you come to the podium, please identify yourself by name and address. Please do so each time you come to the podium, so she can keep track of who is saying what. We will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table to the right of the doorway into the room. The way it works is we will call the case. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative will step up to the podium. The applicant will state their name, their address, then they'll raise their right hand and be sworn, and then they will make their presentation to the board. During the applicant's presentation to the board, the board members may ask questions or engage in comments with the applicant concerning the application and aspects thereof. That can, once that process is all concluded, we will then open it up to public input. There are three categories of public input that have been identified so far. The first is that we'll call are those who wish to speak in favor of the application. I'll ask you to line up and come up one at a time, state your name, your address, and then say what you have to say in support of the application. When we've finished listening to everyone who's in support of the application, then we'll open the floor to those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. Same procedure, line up on the side of the wall over there, come up to the podium, one at a time, state your name, address, state what you want to say in opposition to the application, and when that process is completed, we open up to the third category, which is a relatively new category in the last year or two. Those who aren't in favor of it or opposed to it just want to talk to us about it, you know, and have something to say for us to consider but aren't really one way or the other. If you just want to talk to us about it, that's the third category. You can come up, same process is followed. Once the public input portion is completed, then we will allow the applicant or their representative to come back to the podium and address anything that was raised during the public input portion, and the board can have further opportunity to ask questions or raise any issues. Once that process is all completed, the case is closed, and we'll move on to the next case that appears on the agenda. Once we've heard all the cases that appear on our agenda, the board will take a break, the duration of which will be announced at the time that we take it, and will depend on a number of factors, including but not limited to what time it is and how long we've been going. After we come back from the break, we will then deliberate on each of the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda and have an applicant or representative still present. So if the first applicant has left and gone home, but the second applicant is present, then we'll take the second applicant's case first and go through the agenda for those who are still present in the order that they appear on the agenda. After we've done all those, we'll go back to the top and then go through in the order that they appear on the agenda without applicants or representatives remaining present. There's no further input allowed during the deliberation portion of our meeting. You're welcome to stay and listen to the discussion that we have and to find out what we decide. If you don't wish to stay and you get home and you don't catch us on TV, you're welcome to call the town hall tomorrow morning to the planning and zoning department after nine in the morning, and they'll be glad to tell you what the decision was on the case. So that is how we will work things tonight, and we'll ask to have the first case called.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on our agenda is case number ZB 1507-1, upon the matter of request by Carol Cole for area variances to maintain an existing five-foot-nine-high solid wood fence exceeding maximum permitted height and type, an unfinished side of fence facing neighbor on premises 101 Seacliff Road in an R3 residential district.
Carol Cole, 101 Seacliff Road?
Ms. Cole, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
I'm applying for an area variance because of the decorative piece of fencing against the retaining wall, because we had lost some of the steep slope that was behind it. I bought the house in 1988, and there was a retaining wall there. It was black Creosol railroad ties, and it looks kind of so ugly. But anyway, in 89, the next year, the house is, in 88, it was there because we bought it brand spanking new. It was just built into a hill. And then in 89, my husband put the little L there so he wouldn't lose any more of the slope, and then he put the decorative fencing up there in 89. And I furnished you some pictures with that from the year 1989, and the decorative fence went up then, and there were flower boxes. It was clear, but now it's just stained right now. And it covers the ugly retaining wall because it's black. This enhances the property, but not what it looks like.
So if I understand you correctly, it's been there 26 years?
Yes, sir.
The fence? And I did notice that...
Yeah, yeah. The retaining wall is there when the house was built, and we just covered the retaining wall.
And the decorative fence was in 89, right?
Yes, sir.
So that was 26 years ago that you did that?
Absolutely.
And I noticed that it's falling, it looks like it's, the wall is starting to fall to the north, and the fence is going to go along with it?
No.
It's not...
It's there tight. It's just leaning a little bit.
Just leaning?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's definitely not coming down.
Not going anywhere? Okay. I was concerned that it might be falling over soon.
No, actually, in 2000, it was before my husband got sick. 2004, the first top, I think it's four top layers of the retaining wall, the railroad ties started rotting, so my husband put some pressure treated there and replaced it. And then he put a new piece of fencing up, too. You know, the fencing.
Okay. So that's in okay shape, then?
Oh, yeah.
It's not going to fall?
It's not going anywhere.
I also see you're a fan of raccoons.
Yes, I am. I love them. I have a whole 16-by-16 foot room full of raccoons.
And part of what you submitted to us was a statement signed by a number of your neighbors indicating that they had no issue with the existing fence?
Absolutely.
From 128 Seacliff, 115 Seacliff, 128 looks like a Becker, 115 is Miller Dibble, perhaps, and Michael Dibble, and Nancy Cook from 108 Seacliff, Noel Obaid from 95 Seacliff...
They're next door to me.
Somebody from 107, and somebody from 102. Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Well, I'm curious, if this fence has been up 20-some years, has there been some type of complaint? Do we have a complaint from the town?
Yeah, there was a complaint. Someone went down the whole street, and we had a whole series of complaints for that road.
You had a whole series of complaints for that road?
Right. Someone, I don't know if it was an area neighbor, but someone gave us several addresses on the road, any complaints they saw, anything they thought was in the front yard.
Okay, so somebody didn't like it? Yeah.
Well, as well as other houses, just right down the strip.
Okay.
Well, the same thing struck me. Same thing, 26 years to find a fault with this quite decorative fence that's been there all that time. Looks great. I like raccoons, too, as long as they're made out of wood.
There. I have a real one, though, at home.
Oh, you do?
But it's taxidermist.
I'm very curious as to why, after all this time, this is coming to lighten the town, and is, was there no permit for this, or what was the...
When I bought the house...
...per septic?
Right, there wasn't a permit. So she wants to make it right so she can get a permit.
I didn't not build a retaining wall. That was there when the house was built. It was brand-new spanking-new one. Yeah, because they built the house into the, into the hill.
So the fence, the decorative part?
Yeah.
What's the fault with that? Is it too high?
Yeah. It's just as high as the retaining wall is.
Right.
Exactly the height of the retaining wall.
Yeah, because it's in the front yard, so it's the height and the type of fencing. Yes.
I can't move the retaining wall. I lost the slope.
All right. Well, I think I get the picture now. Thank you.
Yeah, because you can even see in the pictures there, sir, that you can see that one big tree there, all the roots. You can see that you people have taken with it, and that's how much of the slope that I lost, because you can see now the tree roots are exposed.
Can I ask a question? Is the fence right? I didn't get a chance to get over there, and I apologize. Is the fence right up against the retaining wall?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay. And the finished side is facing out instead of facing the neighbor as well? That was the other variance that you needed, right?
Yeah, because if you turned it around, you'd have the strip going across.
It's hidden by the wall. It's right up against the wall, right?
Yeah. Nobody's seeing the other side of the fence where it is.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, there's bushes there of the people that live on that side. I mean, they don't have no problem with it.
Any other questions or comments, then, from the board? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to come and talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter and move on to the next item on our agenda.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1507-2, upon the matter of request by Knopf Shaw LLP, acting as agent for RSM Aranacoy Bay Development LLC, for an area variance to exceed the maximum allowable density for residential units on premises 500 Newport Road in a WD waterfront district.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and board members. My name is Alan Knopf. I'm attorney for RSM Aranacoy Bay Development LLC. We're requesting an area variance tonight. The RSM is, was approved for this project...
Hold on. Oh, I don't, is there an applicant here that's going to speak?
Oh, yes, yes. Steve Mancini's here, and Dan Brock from Newport...
If they could just stand and raise their right hands?
Or from, Cus, Cusick, sorry.
Do you swear affirm that anything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem, Mr. Chairman. The development was approved in 2010 to 2011. There was a full environmental impact statement done, findings were made, and the project was approved by the planning board. Tonight, we're here to build exactly the same project that was previously approved. There's absolutely no physical change to the project. The only difference is we would like to draw a line on a piece of paper. We would like to subdivide the development into two lots instead of having one lot. And that has triggered, the town's interpretation is that has triggered the requirement for a variance, even though the project would look exactly the same. And the reason we want to do that is we went to the Department of Law to get condominium approval, and they are requiring a certain 15% pre-sale. And because we're doing 44 units in the larger buildings, and there'll be nine townhouses in what's pictured in yellow, if we, we would have to sell 15% of the entire 53 upfront in order to sell one unit, once we got the approval, which will be much more, it really would not be feasible for us. I think the, there are very few condominiums these days in our area. I think the rules are mainly pointed at people in New York City, where the market is quite different. So what we're asking for is a variance from the density requirements, which would be triggered because we are building in an EPod, or in more than one, in several EPods. The developer obtained an EPod permit back in, I believe, 2010. They did the work in the EPod, the major infrastructure work, so they installed the sewers and water lines and all that. The steep slope and woodlot EPod have already been disturbed, so the work has already been done. However, a good portion of the site is in a wetland EPod, and that is because there's a 300-foot buffer in the cove area. And one of the mitigation measures we did as part of the SECA review was to actually take out one of the docks that was in the cove area, where there's more sensitive environmental issues as far as the, in the water, as far as the marine life. So we've already done that, mitigated that potential impact. The area has frankly been disturbed, we believe, since before the Civil War. We have pictures of picnics that would happen at the Newport House, you know, in the 19th century. The area was already disturbed. So the developer has a DEC wetland permit. They didn't see an issue because, you know, the area, again, has been disturbed for maybe more than 150 years. The, no actual construction in the wetland itself. It's just the buffer area. So we did go to the planning board. The planning board renewed the EPod permit for five years, so we have the EPod permit. The planning board also approved the subdivision contingent upon this board granting the area variance. So looking at the area variance test, which I went through in my letter, and I know you're all very familiar with, overall, we believe the benefit to the applicant far outweighs any, we really don't see any detriment to the community or neighborhood. This site, again, has been developed over the last two centuries. This would be a great development for Aranacoy. The waterfront, the local waterfront revitalization plan and the harbor plan all call for utilizing this area. The, as far as going through the factors, again, we don't think there'll be any change in the neighborhood character. It's long been developed, and it's in the waterfront development district, which is intended to include moderate-density residential development, as well as certain commercial, recreational, and open space uses that serve residents and visitors. This is exactly the kind of development that I think that was contemplated. As far as alternate solutions, unfortunately, we really have been unable to come up with any other solutions because of the way we, the economic reality of the marketplace, basically. We don't think that we'd be able to sell the, I guess it would be nine units. We'd have to have nine units under contract before we could actually close on one, which would be extremely difficult to do. They have actually gone ahead and built the first three townhouse units, built the structure, but they had to stop work because of the holdup on the condominium approval. The only alternative, I guess, would be to make, convert the project to apartments, which I don't think is something that we want to do or the town would like to see. As far as whether it's substantial, granted, the increase in numbers from looking at the site capacity worksheet would be a substantial change from 10 to 54. However, there's really no change at all from what's already approved. So we don't consider it substantial, since we've already got a project approved for 54 units. As far as the physical environmental conditions, we've already gone through a full SECA review, made SECA findings. The planning board was lead agency, and it really concluded that, you know, to the extent there were any impacts, we mitigated them. We've addressed them. Again, we took out the one dock that mitigates any possible impact on the wetlands. I think it really makes it better. The drainage actually is improved by the way the storm waters are being handled. So, and we do have the wetland permit from the DEC. There's no further SECA review is required, because you've already done a final EIS, and there's no change in the physical project or the way the environment would be impacted. So there's no need to do any further SECA review. And lastly, the situation is not self-created. The property was already in the EPods, even though, again, it's been developed for a long, long time, and we have to go through the requirements of the Department of Law as well, as well as the town. So we think that this would be a great project. It's already been approved by the planning board. A real positive for the town, consistent with the zoning, the harbor management plan. And we just need this really technical glitch straightened out so that we can have two lots instead of one. Just for your information, we will have cross easements, so that, you know, we have the dividing line down the middle of the road, and, you know, each lot one and lot two both can use the road. They'll both be able to use the, the lot with the townhouses will be able to use the docks. We'll have, you know, we're going to have agreements that are going to have to be approved by the Attorney General and all, but to deal with all that. But again, we think it'll be a great project, and unfortunately, it stalled due to this glitch, and we hope that the board will approve it.
Speaking of glitches, the description of the project on the form indicates that you're looking for the variance in order to develop 54 condominium units.
Yeah.
But down on the sheet where it talks about what the code requirement and what the request is, you're asking to go from four units to nine and six units to 44, which, if my math is correct, is 53, not 54, so I'd...
Well, you're right. The one unit is the Nautica, the clubhouse unit. So, no, maybe Mr. Mancini can explain it better than I can.
I just want to make sure that at the end, you're not told you can't, you know, build the last one.
Yeah, that's, it's a total of 54 units. The Nautica is separate. There are 54 residential units.
Oh, okay.
So it is nine and 45.
So it's nine and 45. Okay.
And that's what it always, or was originally approved at, and hasn't changed.
I apologize. Must be a typo on my part.
Record of motion, it does request...
No, I was just looking at the cover sheet.
Right, I saw that thing. It must be there.
Yeah, okay. So it would go from six to 45, which is a variation of 39 units, all of which have already been approved by the planning board and everybody else that you went through?
Right.
Before you had to come to us?
Right. I mean, the whole project was approved, ready to go. We didn't need a variance, you know, five years ago, whatever. And now the second timer on the planning board has approved, again, the subdivision is contingent on your approval. The EPod didn't need a contingency. It's effective.
I should also mention that we received a memo from the Aranacoy Conservation Board indicating that the Conservation Board understands that requiring adherence to the site capacity worksheet for this project at this stage would be unreasonable. And however, they believe that the site capacity worksheet is a necessary and valuable tool to protect the environmentally sensitive areas in our town, and are asking us to include in our findings for the application, a statement that indicates that this case is exceptional because the project had prior approval, and it should in no way be considered a precedent for future applications requesting extensive relief from the site capacity worksheet, which is an integral part of the town code and is far from the most stringent when compared to the site capacity worksheets of other towns in Monroe County. And they're urging us to require adherence to the town code for any future application. So I just wanted to make sure that that was mentioned before we opened it up to public input.
And from a town staff perspective, that's a perspective that we share as well.
Okay.
This is a unique circumstance.
I just have two questions. Maybe I missed something, but during your presentation, you mentioned the planning board granting approval for five years.
Right.
Something. What does that mean?
The original, that's for the EPod permit. So we needed a permit to undertake work in the EPod, and originally, it was approved and had a three-year expiration, so it really, it expired, so we needed to extend that. So we got a five-year extension on the EPod permit. Apparently, the code requires a time limit on an EPod permit.
Yes.
So your special, like a special permit, I think that's not required, or your variance is forever unless there's some condition. But the code specifically requires a date for the EPod permit to expire. So we would have to construct the entire project within the five years, or else come back to the planning board for an extension.
That's correct. And then anytime, the reason that even though that some of the applicant referenced taking out the dock and doing most, most of the work that is, would be deemed environmentally sensitive, has already taken place under their old EPod permit, and that, by anytime you pull a building permit, you need, in an EPod, you need an active EPod permit. So that is why the renewal was necessary, although the project has not changed from its original form.
Okay, I understand. My second question is, how long have you been working on this project? How many years?
Steve, do you want to, what, three years? Well, I mean, I guess they went, do you want to maybe explain the work that you've done and over the...
And part two of that question is, do you feel you've been jumping through an awful lot of hoops here to finally get this resolved?
Absolutely.
But it's been five years?
So I guess we can look at it a couple ways, physical construction or original application...
Original application, right from the...
So that's been five years.
Five years. That's what I was interested to know. It seems like you're going through a lot, and I think it's interesting to people that live in the area to understand why. It's a sensitive spot. So I'm glad to see that it's hopefully coming to a conclusion, having finished the construction.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have a question, and hopefully you can answer this nice and quickly. Environmental, the environmental impact. I read through, and you had the planning board approvals, and the planning board said that they performed the full SECA review and everything. Is there any aspect of any environmental review that's still out there, or has everything been completed? You have all the permits from all the environmental agencies?
Yeah, everything is, to my knowledge, we have every permit we need. We needed the wetland permit from the DEC, was recently renewed. We just got it, actually, June 30th. We got another, I don't know, five year, or, yeah, another five years on that, the EPod permit. And I don't, I'm not aware of anything else.
I'll actually, unless Nicky wants to, I want to jump in. For the board who's not familiar, I'm Laura Smith, attorney for the town, filling in. For this particular project, there's a conflict with the deputy town attorney, so I'm just filling in on this particular project. Also, did as well at the planning board. We do have one procedure point of view from the zoning board of appeals, since the zoning board of appeals has never taken an action on this project. We have to have a finding statement of our own pursuant to the SECA regulations, which is, we could get into now, it's a big procedure that we should have a discussion with before going forward. And I believe all of you have had an opportunity to see the final environmental impact statement, very thick, bound volume. Before any board take, that is the thick, bound volume. Before any board or agency...
That's kind of what I was looking for.
That's it. That's right there.
Thanks.
Before any agency takes an action for which a final environmental impact statement has been made, each agency has to find, make its own findings, which I have the language in front of me, that the findings each individual agency must make must consider the relevant environmental impacts, facts, and conclusions disclosed in the final environmental impact statement, which is here at the desk. impact statement, which is here at the, the desk. Way and balance relevant environmental impacts with social, economic and other considerations. Provide a rationale for the agency's decision. Certify that the requirements of this part has been met. Certify that consistent with social, economic and other essential considerations from among the reasonable alternatives available, the action is one that avoids or minimizes adverse environmental impacts to the maximum extent practicable. And that adverse environmental impacts will be avoided or minimized to the maximum extent practicable by incorporating as conditions to decision those that mitigative, those mitigative measures were identified as practicable. So the zoning board of appeals has to make individual findings. However, the planning board as an agency that has made a decision on an action, they have made findings in 2009...
2010.
Sorry, 2010, um, which they re-adopted in, at their meeting in 2015. If the zoning board of appeals concurs with the planning board's findings that were included in that application package, um, the zoning board of appeals may adopt as their own the findings of the planning board. But another board's, uh, actions can't take the place of what the zoning board has to do. Simply the zoning board would take on those findings as their own findings. So that's the, kind of the only procedural thing that's left since this board has never made, um, a decision or made a findings on the final environmental impact statement.
And in plain terms, if you agree that there's no substantive change to the environmental impact that's already taken place, uh, the review that's already taken place for this project in the past, if you don't view that there's any change to that project or any change to the environmental impacts that were already approved, which since the project has not changed aside from the line, then you would adopt the findings that were found in 2010?
Mm-hmm.
As the planning board did at their last month's meeting.
And, and just out of curiosity, the zoning board way back when, it wasn't necessary for us to be a part of that because there was no...
There's no action before you.
For us.
Mm-hmm.
And it was just based on the fact that they're splitting up the two lots.
Correct.
Is the only action. So everything stays the same, other than the fact that we need to agree on the lot split and then just say, based on all the current findings of the planning board, everything's good.
More or less.
Mm-hmm. But you would adopt those as your own findings.
So this, this should be the findings, if I'm reading this right, from December 23rd of 2009?
Correct.
So can you get those all read, the next five?
I think that's right.
Started in 20, and ended in 20.
So you've been working on it longer than five years.
Yeah, I think the first approvals were in 2010, but the findings, I think was December 2009.
Findings were in December of 2009, right?
I, yep, and that's within the application, um, package that the applicant submitted.
Right, there's a...
Findings themselves.
And then there's a letter from Carrie.
There's a five-page followed by a eight-page, there's 13 pages of findings.
Based upon the, yeah, the project that was approved.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, then we will move on to the, oh, no, yeah, to the public input portion. Sorry about that. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If you wish to speak in favor, step right up to the podium.
John Kaufman, 249 Hoffman Road. I'm here on behalf of the Conservation Board tonight. Um, we would just like to reiterate our desire to have language in this find, in your set of findings for this application that says this should in no way set a precedent for future, uh, area variances from the site capacity worksheet. This is a dramatic variance. We have cases coming forward which are also going to ask for variances, area variances from the S C W, and we don't want that to be considered a precedent for these next cases. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk about fun they used to have at the Newport House while we're talking about it? Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case and go on to the next, uh, case that we have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next case on the agenda is case number ZB 1507-3. Upon the matter of request by Giovanni, Christina and Michael Malyo Cetti for a special use per, permit to harbor four huns with coop pursuant to section 235-70 of Town Code on premises 75 Echo Hill Drive in an R3 residential district.
Hello, uh, my name's Giovanni Malyo Cetti.
I'm Christina Malyo Cetti.
We live at 75 Echo Hill Drive.
You can raise your right hands.
Yep.
You swear or affirm that everything you say today will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
The design of the existing chicken coop.
Yeah.
Is quite different from any other chicken coop designs that we've seen.
Mm-hmm.
Since the town started of late, last couple of years, having chickens peer on our docket just about every month for months at a time. Um, and it's quite different from the one that you plan to put up?
The one that we plan to build or the one that's...
The one that you planned.
Is currently there.
The one that you've got, you submitted a, a drawing showing a, uh, I'm not sure if it's a peaked, the peaked roof coming off of the shed?
Yes, yeah.
All right, and what looks like two, uh, front windows and a front door?
Yeah.
All right, and that's going to face the road, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So that one, can you tell me about the one that you want to put up?
Um, it's just going to be an existing, or a structure off the, uh, shed. It's behind the house, so you can't really see the shed and there's a tree in front of it.
Was this the shed that when you pull up in front of your house and you look to the left and you look at the front of your house, there's the white shed?
Yes.
That's in the back, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, there, I don't recall a tree being between me and the shed.
There's a small pear tree and there's a, another, um, big arborvitie bush.
There's a tree between the house and the shed, but you couldn't, you can't see it when you're driving because it's kind of closer to the house.
Okay, all right. And the arborvitie that are along the existing coop you're talking about?
Right.
Yes, there's those four small ones. And then there's a, a larger one in the yard.
All right. Well, you're, you're going to add, build this as an addition essentially to the shed.
That's correct, yeah.
All right. And other applications that we've had have, uh, had a lot of information about the sinking, uh...
The coop we have now was just because winter was right around the corner, so we really didn't have much time to do it. Um, that was pretty much to provide warmth for the chickens. Um, it wasn't really planned, it was kind of just a quick thing, just so we kept them safe and warm for the winter that was soon approaching.
Most of the, what we've seen in the applications have, uh, some kind of, uh, protective mesh fencing that's buried.
A run.
Uh, like a foot and a half to two feet in the ground under the foundation to keep animals from burrowing in to get to the chickens.
Yeah.
And they have all kinds of plans, which, I may have missed it, uh, but I didn't see in, in yours as to, you know, how you're going to minimize any, uh, attraction that this might pose to other animals and steps you're going to take to ensure sanitation and cleanliness and health of the, the chickens.
Um, I believe I wrote in my letter of intent that there's going to be a, um, a concrete footing around that the, um, addition essentially it would be, would sit on top of, so...
And how deep is that going to be?
Um, 36 inches deep, 48, whatever the, um, frost line is.
All right. And the concrete is going to be your barrier for the protection?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And how do you, how do you plan on maintaining it and the chickens? And how many chickens are you, as I understand it, you have four now?
That's correct, yes.
How long have you had them?
Um, they're a year old. They just turned a year old a couple of days ago.
All right. And you missed all the chicken applications that we've had in the last two or three years?
Uh, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. Until the first one came on our agenda, I didn't know that we did deal with chickens either.
Yeah.
We'd also deal with pigeons and monkeys and Kuwaitis and other things as well, but, um, so for those watching, chickens need a permit before they come into the town.
Yep.
All right? So you, you acquired your chickens and built the coop to keep them warm in the winter and then somebody told you, oops, you need a permit to keep them?
That's correct, yes.
All right. And you included pictures of the little chicks on this little boy's shoulder. I assume that the picture next to it, which has the full grown, uh, one, is what they look like now?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
And there's four of those?
Yep.
All right. And you also have one with the two dogs in the picture?
Mm-hmm, yep.
How did the chickens and the dogs get along?
They don't mind them at all.
Oh, yeah.
And you have, I should also indicate that in addition, uh, to your letter, you also had a number of people, looks like some family members from East Rochester, uh, but you also had, um, uh, somebody from 76 Echo Hill Drive, I think that would be across the street, right?
Uh, yes, that's correct, yep.
And somebody from Webster, I'm assuming that's a friend or a family member?
Um, would that...
Sherry Totes?
Yes, that's a cousin of ours. That's the mother of Nicholas who's in the picture.
Okay.
Or...
And then, uh, an Erica Barber from 85 Echo Hill Drive.
That's next door.
Jackie and Ronald Barber from 85 Echo Hill Drive.
That's next door.
Um, somebody from 232 Edge Creek Trail, looks like a young lad there who loves coming over and playing with the chickens, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And somebody from 65 Echo Hill Drive.
That's our other next door.
Two people, they're next door on the other side.
Yes, yep.
And 55 Echo Hill, 66 Echo Hill, another 66 Echo Hill, uh, somebody from Yorkshire Road.
Yep.
Somebody from Whalen Road in Penfield, I'm assuming that's another friend or relative, right?
Mm-hmm.
Warren Avenue, that's also somebody that you know?
Yes, she has chickens as well.
All right. So the, the neighbors that have signed, they're all on both sides of you and across the street, is that right? So the ones who are most affected by the chickens?
That's correct, yeah.
Have they, we've had complaints in the past that, um, chickens make a lot of noise early in the morning. Have you had any complaints of that?
Not from our neighbors. The only noise that our chickens make is when they lay an egg.
An egg.
Yeah. When they lay an egg, they might chirp a little bit.
So they announce that?
Yeah, they...
Okay. And, but you haven't had complaints from the neighbors of being awakened? You haven't had complaints of the dogs in the neighborhood being, uh, unduly agitated by the chickens?
Not that we know of. There was a complaint about a rooster that we, that we received in the mail, but then, um, there's a gentleman who lives on the next street over, what is that, Spartan?
Yeah.
On Spartan, um, I told Donna Martello about that and she notified the city of Rochester because that's, he lives on Norton Street, he lives right on the corner. And they were able to confirm that and they, now that's in the city of Rochester's answer, so...
The rooster? There's a rooster in the city around the corner?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. So it's not your rooster?
Not mine.
Okay. We haven't let roosters in Arundicoid yet.
Yeah.
All right. So you haven't had any problems of any, um, smells or, um, nuisances coming from the chickens that you've had for the year?
Not that we, nope, not that we have.
Are you looking to get any more chickens than the four that you already have?
Nope.
And are you looking to go beyond the life of the four that you have?
Um, I don't know. I don't know yet.
How long do you expect the chickens to live?
Hopefully a very long time.
Well, I mean, horses can live, you know, like 50 years. I don't think chickens are anywhere near that.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the life.
I think somebody came in, one of the earlier applicants, I think last year, said that they have a four to five-year lifespan.
Okay.
So in the event, and I don't know what we...
Yeah.
Might do, but in the event that we were to, uh, issue a special permit and limit it to four years and the four chickens that you have, so that you'd have to come back to, uh, add to your chicken addition or get new ones, you wouldn't have a problem with that?
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Other applications that we've approved, we've included provisions that require you to furnish to the town on an annual basis, a certification from a veterinarian that they've inspected the animals and that they're free from any communicable diseases and, and healthy. Are you willing to do that?
Yes, yeah.
You also willing to agree to have someone from the town come out and look at it in six months to a year to assess whether or not it, it's having any negative impact in your neighborhood?
Yes, of course.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, I think those are most of the conditions that we've put in. Is there anything else?
The only que, only question I got is that if they're adding on to that shed, are they going to need another permit for that shed now that they're increasing it by eight by six, plus what they already have?
Do you want me to permit you to add on to the shed?
Yes.
So they're going to have to have another permit for that?
Well, you'd have to, we'd have to look at the permit that's on file, but you would have to amend that, typically amend that permit, um, if you're going to use that as your coop, which it looks like that's the plan, so...
Yeah, okay.
Well, you're building the coop onto the side of the shed, right?
That's correct, yes.
So you're, the shed's going to...
We're not using the shed as the chicken coop, we're building onto the shed.
Just going to have a common wall at the back of the coop, right?
Yeah, that's...
It's another structure.
Yeah, it's another structure, so you're going to need a building permit probably for that.
And the only other question I have is, you can have any kind of a fenced area?
I see that you had the chickens running around. We had a problem before where chickens got out and were in the neighbors' yards and, and complaints started. Uh, do you have an fenced area by the coop or anything or what do you...
Um, there is not a fence on that side of the property. Um, I've talked to my neighbors and they were okay. If we wanted to put a fence, we could. Um, if there becomes any problem, I guess we...
Well, most, most of the coops we approved have a fenced in area so the chickens can get out of the coop and run around and enjoy the fresh air and all of that.
Right.
And, um, but you, if you don't have a fence and they're just running, they're, they go into neighbors' yards and can create...
Yes, but hopefully with the coop that I proposed to build, um, it will be large enough to keep them in there and there'll be space on the floor for them to run around and everything.
So they wouldn't have any fresh air as far as your...
That's what the windows were for.
Oh, the windows were for, okay.
Yeah.
Would you mind putting on, um, a fenced area to, I mean, I think the...
No, I wouldn't mind at all.
From, from all the other applications I've seen, it seems to me that, that most of the chickens like to run and you need a run area, so you...
Yeah, if I, I would do that.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to discuss the benefits of chickens or the non-benefits of chickens in the town of Arundicoid? Nobody? Okay, thank you. We'll close your case and move on.
Yes. Um, so I would need a permit for the chicken coop.
If we, if we grant you the, the permit that you're looking for, it's going to be subject to checking with the town to ensure that you have any and all necessary permits to complete the project.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1507-4. Upon the matter of request by Jeremy Mascotti for an area variance to construct a front porch and attached garage with less than required front setback on premises 70 Fairlawn Drive in an R1 residential district.
Hello, Jeremy Mascotti, 70 Fairlawn Drive.
Jody Moscotti, seventy Fair Lawn Drive.
Raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
We're requesting a, sorry, a variance to tear down our existing garage and add a, pull the garage five feet forward along with a, a front porch and a small addition on the second floor of our existing home. It would change the setback, the front setback from forty feet to thirty-five feet. I do have signatures from our surrounding neighbors who have no objection to it at all.
Was that part of what you originally submitted or do you have
No, I just grabbed them this week.
If you could hand them to Mr. Huber and he'll pass them down and then we'll read that into the record. Were there any neighbors that you spoke with that weren't in favor of it?
No.
And the reason that you want to do this is?
To put the addition on? The house is a little small. We have two children, two dogs. It's just fifteen hundred square foot is just too small for us.
So the addition would provide the additional needed space that you're desiring without requiring you to move?
Yes.
Be less expensive to add on to your existing house than to move to another house, so that creates a practical hardship?
Right, we like the street too. It's a good street. There's a lot of kids that are on the street that are our chil, our children's age. We're coming up through the same school dris, district, so we kinda wanna stay in Aranacote.
Just looking at the plans, it looks like it'll be a nice looking addition.
Thank you.
Nice porch.
Yeah, we're hoping. There's nobody on the street with a porch right now, so.
Could start a trend.
Yeah, we could.
Is that, are those the signatures from the neighbors?
Yep.
Just for the record, we have signatures from Nancy Cooper at eighty Fair Lawn, Raymond Lovato, who's somewhere on Fair Lawn, um.
He's our neighbor, next door neighbor, directly next door.
Um, somebody whose signature I can't read at eighty-nine Fair Lawn?
That's Kristen Coyle.
Okay, Lori Corbett at seventy-nine Fair Lawn, Kevin Marin at seventy-one Fair Lawn.
Yep.
We'll add those as part of the, uh, packet and include that in the, uh, in the record.
For whatever it's worth, uh, your comment about being the first to a front porch. I think we're seeing a trend towards that now.
Yeah.
It's starting to change a little bit. For a while it was, uh, patios, backyard stuff.
Right.
And the front of the houses were uninhabited. Having front porches up and down the street, it sets well with us, I know it does, and it certainly enhances the neighborhood. See people, talk to them. I, I have a large front porch on my house and it's the best thing, just the best thing.
Which also, also shows that the thinking of the board can change because thirty years ago, the zoning board in Aranacote said if we let somebody have a porch, one of my neighbors, we'd have to let everyone have one.
Which is really not true because we don't, not, we don't set precedices like that, but nevertheless, it's, it's a good trend.
Sure.
And, uh,
We're more favorably inclined.
I give it away ahead of time, but I'll probably vote in favor of that.
He can't keep a secret.
I have a question about the garage.
Sure.
Um, is the new garage door wider? Does it change the side, the number of vehicles that you can put inside the garage?
No, it's still gonna be a one-car garage, but it's a larger, it'll be a larger garage door, yep. We could barely fit, and we can't really fit a car in there now with a small garage door.
It's not gonna be two cars?
No, it's just gonna, it might be like one and a half, but it's, it's only gonna be built for one car.
Looks like there's two garage doors.
It does, that's just the, um, the craftsman style look of the door. It's just gonna be one though.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about it? We'll close the hearing with respect to this matter, move on to the next case. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one five zero seven dash five. Upon the matter of request by Peter Clark for an area variance to maintain an existing rear deck with less than required rear setback on premises two forty Pine Hill Drive in an R3 residential district.
Hello, I'm Peter Clark from two forty Pine Hill Drive.
If you'd, uh, swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Um, the basics of this project started as taking some old decrepit concrete steps that were original to the house. Um, kids trying to play in the backyard, the wife and I are trying to slowly make the backyard to a more livable, usable, enjoyable space on a very small piece of property. We have a forty by forty house on a fifty by one hundred lot. Listening to some of the other cases, we don't have the proper setback for the front yard or the backyard for anything as it is. Uh, the backyard's fifty wide by thirty. Um, it's just not possible to do anything without a variance back there. Um, I'm not really sure what else the, the board would like to hear about the project.
When I talked to you yesterday, you explained to me that your backdoor neighbor who's moving in is somebody that you know who's not at all concerned about the fact that you'll be sitting up higher and them looking out the window, they'd be able to see what you're doing on your deck.
Correct. The, the existing owners of the house have actually relocated to Florida. Um, I've been in contact with them over the past six months, but have not actually seen them in the past six months. I know the individual, um, his name is Mr. Dan Ott, who's going to be buying the property, is in the process of doing that once he sells his own home. I've spoken with him, I've sent an email to him. Unfortunately, with both of our schedules, we have not gotten, had, got her to have a written signature, but he's had no issues or concerns with it. Um, as it is, he's dealing with the same issues with that property. There is only a nine and a half foot wide backyard to that property. And up until five years ago, it was a chain link fence that separated the two properties. It was actually after the town of Aranacote, I put in a white vinyl fence to the immediate right of my property where there's a pocket park now. The, uh, Ali Roth Park that was put in, um, but then they put in a white vinyl fence and I followed suit with a permit to the west side of my property. I've also spoken to the neighbor that's directly to the, what would be the west of my, as well, and she has no issues or concerns. I do have a return email from her today that she got back from vacation to send to me to say that she had no issues with that.
Alright, if you could hand that to Mr. Huber and we'll pass that down and add that to the file on the case.
You can see within that file, that email chain, that the, uh, the written email for confirmation with Mr. Ott was sent as well today, but I believe just with his work schedule, he did not get a chance to reaffirm that, just getting back after the holiday weekend.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from anyone on the board? We have a email from, um,
It's at the very bottom of that page, you can see her response.
Ms. Weaver, uh, I have no issues with the deck or its placement on your property. She's from two twenty-eight Pine Hill Drive, which is immediately to the west of the property. Seeing
You're gonna rebuild the deck?
What, what happened was that it started out with, um, an idea for my wife to replace the existing steps, which was a five foot by four foot, uh, concrete pad that was about two and a half feet in the air with three steps that were falling apart. They were originally with, uh, built with the house in nineteen sixty-seven. As we started to tear those out and work towards something new, had the idea of, well, we'll make this a little bit bigger and maybe if we, you know, we, nicer to have a little bit of a bigger space to have with that. So it went from that small pad that's there to covering an area where we could not get any grass to grow or anything else nice to happen to a ten by twenty or twenty-two, I'll have to look at the plan, cause I can't remember the number right now, um, usable space that we could, you know, entertain, enjoy the music from the, uh, facilities that are in the neighborhood. You know, there's a couple bars and grills in the neighborhood that have live bands that we like to listen to while we're in the backyard, um.
Ten by twenty-two.
Thank you. Uh, just usable for what, I mean, it's, we have a large family on a small house on a small property and much like, um, the family that was just up here before us, we like the street, we like the neighborhood, we wanna make the most of what we have, uh, to stay in the neighborhood and in the town.
So it went the route of most do-it-yourself projects around the house, started small and grew.
Well, you, a couple of you gentlemen were there in the last few days and you saw what was going on with my roof, which has led to part of the ceiling of the bathroom, and it continues.
Welcome to homeownership.
Joys of homeownership, yes. Alright, any other questions or comments? Anyone wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Would anyone like to talk about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that case and move on to the next case.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one five zero seven dash six. Upon the matter of request by Dennis and Michelle Slattery for an area variance to widen existing driveway with less than required side setback on premises one five eight Hermitage Road in an R1 residential district.
Dennis Slattery, one fifty-eight Hermitage Road.
You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm looking for, uh, area variance just to extend my driveway by two feet by approximately fifty feet on the east side, just to widen my driveway. I have, uh, four children right now, we're up to four cars and there's gonna be another one soon, so it's a ten-foot driveway if you've been over there.
Another child or another car?
Another car. No more, four children's enough. So with the ten-foot wide driveway, we're getting rutted, just driving in the same spot, so we just wanna extend it a little bit just so we have a little bit leeway to move over and not ruin the driveway.
So what you're looking for is a zero setback on the front?
Yes.
Which is permitted behind the front foundation?
Yes. No, it's not permitted.
Well, you've got the
It's currently, it's currently upright to the property line behind the front foundation, correct?
Right.
Because that was existing, but anything new, like, I was told if I was to rip that out, I'd, I'd have to move that off the property line.
But then you have in red, the portion to the side of the garage, right up to the sideline, indicating that that's okay.
Yes, that
Cause it's not part of a driveway, only driveways where you park a car.
Oh, so if you're not, if you're just paving up to the line, that's okay as long as it's not a driveway for a car?
If you put a patio or something, we don't have any lots, but we do have it for parking cars.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions or?
Any question from your neighbor to the right, or they?
They haven't said anything either way. I really don't, we don't communicate a lot, so they haven't said yes, no, either way.
They, they are aware of the project, I'd say.
Oh, yeah, the sign was up there for the whole time. If you came by, it was up there.
I think they also would have been sent something in the mail, right?
Yep, yes.
My question is, uh, over here, the, um, I, this makes sense to me down front with the red and the yellow.
Yep.
My question has to do with the other one, but it's
That's what she, we were just talking about. You don't need a permit for that, that's allowable. That's just like a five by, five foot wide next to the side of the garage where I keep my garbage can and my firewood.
That should be out of our
Yeah, that's not a, a part of the equation.
Okay, I got it. That's why I couldn't figure it out, what
Alright, seeing no other questions or comments from the board, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that case, move on to the next matter.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one five zero seven dash seven. Upon the matter of request by Michael Vecarella for area variances to widen existing driveway with less than required side setback and to maintain side and rear yard fencing exceeding maximum allowable height on premises sixty-eight Parkside Crescent in an R1 residential district.
Michael Vecarella, sixty-eight Parkside Crescent.
You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I was looking for the, uh, zero foot setback for the driveway. Maintain side and rear yard fencing, um, six foot and, uh, for the five foot, uh, front gate. Spoke to my three neighbors, they, they're, um, good with the appearance and, um, the height of everything. And, um, that's about it.
In the picture that you included with the application, and from looking at it, it appears that your neighbor's driveway comes right up to the side and is separated, has like a little curbing of what looks like concrete blocks or something?
Yeah, that's, uh, it's a curbing, it's a property line. Their driveway goes right up to that and it's also about relatively nine inches, uh, higher than my property. So, um.
So you'd be paving up to
Yeah.
that, like little wall or?
Yep, it would go right up to that wall, but, um, even with that, my truck makes it through, it's still a pretty tight space, so. Yeah, be looking to pave from the, uh, curbing to the house.
When I was at the house, you did mention that you were gonna drop the, that fence along that curb down of about six inches so that it's, uh, not so high. You're still planning on doing that?
Yep, uh, be dropping that fence approximately seven inches, so it'd be, um, six foot from the height of the, um, future driveway total.
Right. And also, uh, attached to, or part of your application package was, uh, um, a statement, uh, indicating that the neighbors, Suzanne Morrow at sixty-nine Parkside Crescent, Mona Wilkins at seventy-two Parkside Crescent, which is right next door, and somebody else at sixty-two Parkside Crescent, all found that to be acceptable.
Yep, I spoke to the three neighbors, the two next to me and the one across the street, and they're all, uh, good with the fence.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone else who'd like to just talk about it? Seeing none, we'll close this, uh, case and move on to the next case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one five zero seven dash eight. Upon the matter of request by Joe D L S Hen, Alessandro, excuse me, for an area variance to maintain an existing six-foot high side yard fence exceeding maximum allowable height on premises forty-five Beach Terrace in an R2 residential district.
Anyone here with respect to forty-five Beach Terrace? Was there anyone here who wanted to address the application at forty-five Beach Terrace that the applicant isn't going to address tonight? We'll move on to the next case.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one five zero seven dash nine. Upon the matter of request by Brian O'Dowd for an area variance to construct a front porch addition with less than required front setback on premises twenty-three Winchester Road in an R1 residential district.
Hi, I'm Brian O'Dowd and this is my wife, Erin O'Dowd.
I'm Erin O'Dowd at twenty-three Winchester Road.
Raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and attached to your application was, uh, a statement from neighbors indicating that they'd reviewed the architectural plans and were in support of your application for a porch, and that was signed by Dan Watts, twenty-six Winchester Road, uh, Grady Bailey of twenty-six Winchester Road, Gail Mumthan of thirty-three Winchester Road, James O'Kane of twenty-nine Winchester Road, Janet O'Kane of twenty-nine Winchester, Jessica Nirbesh of thirty-four Winchester Road, Mary Georgia of twenty Winchester Road, Mary Travaglini of thirty-nine Winchester Road, Susan Adamchuck of eight oh two Winona Boulevard, Kathy Avril of seven ninety Winona Boulevard, and Laura Kubanka of seventeen Winchester Road.
Yes, so we're proposing to, uh, build a porch. Um, we're a growing family, my wife is expecting, uh, two twi, twins in November. My wife is expecting two twins in November, and when we looked at what we would like and what we need with our home, we wanted a larger entryway. The porch isn't, it's a, on the left-hand side is an open porch and on the right-hand side, if you're looking at the house from the street, would be an enclosed entryway and it would just give us more room for bringing in the children, bringing in the strollers and additional things more easily than the current door and current access allows us. So the request is really, we've, currently our house is exactly 30 feet from the road and we need the offset to be changed to 22 feet to accommodate this porch.
Is that about the same size as your neighbor to the right?
Yes, actually it's about, almost a foot shorter than the neighbor to the right. Yes, so we're well within the existing homes' porches that are there right now.
Looks nice.
Thank you, Dennis.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk about it? We'll close the hearing with respect to this case, move on to the next matter. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1507-10. Upon the matter of request by Robert Hodge for an area variance to install a six-foot-high board-on-board fencing inside yard exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 193 Floral Drive in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, I'm Robert Hodge from 193 Floral Drive.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
And I see attached to your submission, you had support from your neighbors Blossom Voldman at 200 Floral Drive, Stephen Drake at 211 Floral Drive, Ruth Christensen at 188 Floral Drive, Hassan Bolden at 203 Floral Drive, and Bruce and Marge at 183 Floral Drive.
Correct, yep.
So those are the neighbors that are around you on the three sides?
Yeah, immediately surrounding.
Okay.
So what I'm proposing is currently the replacement of a chain-link fence that's existing. The four-foot chain-link fence goes across the front yard to my side boundary line and goes all the way back. The chain-link fence is in desperate need of repair and replacement, so looking at how I currently use my property, in addition, taking into account the fact that I have a large camper in my driveway and I'd like to conceal that and kind of relieve my neighbors of that unsightly thing, and be able to maintain my, the usage of my side yard, I'd like to, or I am requesting a variance to be able to install a six-foot-high fence that would face the street and as well as go down the side of my yard.
So it's not going to extend beyond the front line of the house?
No, it wouldn't. Additionally too, you know, in looking at the style of the fence, to try to preserve the, you know, the front edge of the street and to stay consistent with the homes and looking nice, it'll be a concave style, so at the peaks it'll be six feet and then it'll drop down to five feet in the middle, as provided in the picture of the application.
And you're going to be able to see through it and not to a great extent, but in between the boards, there's a space.
Yeah, so depending upon the angle that you're viewing it from, you'd be able to see, you know, that there's things back there, but again, it wouldn't be like a chain-link fence like it is now.
And in front of the fence, well, you're going to have a gate facing the street, right, so that you can move the camper in and out?
Yep, correctly, yeah. So the gate would be, would be 10 feet and it'd also be concealed so it wouldn't be, you know, a large visible gate like some, you do see with some fences.
So is the gate going to be made the same as the fence?
Yes, yep, it'll be consistent. The only thing that'll be, will be different will be the two hinges on either side and then the handle.
Other than at the gate part, on the part that faces the road, do you plan to plant some things to soften the fence?
Yeah, the, as it stands now, my driveway would encompass a portion of that fence like it does along the neighbor's house, Hassan's house. On the north side, we would plant some, you know, low ground cover flowers, things like that, connect, continue on with the garden beds that we have now.
Other questions or comments from the board?
Well, it's, I guess the question is the necessity of the six-foot that far forward of the, of the, to the front corner of the garage. Obviously, we've, we have another application coming to us with a six-foot fence all the way to the front part of the house, and I think, you know, it has been a little bit of a trend, and I know we make each case on its own, depending on all the different circumstances and the neighbors and that, but I, you know, just if there's any chance that it can be a shorter fence all the way around, you know, at least along next to the garage and then bring it up to six foot further back. I know you and I spoke about that and you prefer the six-foot, and I understand that, but that's my only concern.
No, I think it's a valid concern, you know, and the reason for having the convex down to the five-foot mark at the minimum, the camper as it stands now is four and a half feet off the ground, so when it's parked back there, again, the convex part will still continue to hide that.
I think too, Mike, there was, you had discussion, we had discussion last night too.
We did, yes.
And it seemed like if I remember right, it was going to be a little joint venture with a neighbor down the road where their fences were going to meet.
Right, which again, at a six-foot wall going from house to house, it looks like a continuous wall of two houses and a big fence. Again, as far as...
Right.
Their two, the two families are concerned, they like the look. I just, I just question the look sometimes. Sometimes it'd be like putting a fence six foot across from your one house to the house, to the left of you. That's a lot of fence, a lot of height, but again...
I kind of agree with you, Mike, but you know, the one thing that softens it for me is those dips.
Yeah, I agree. It is a pretty looking fence. Right, I agree. It is, I didn't notice the style of fence yesterday when I looked at the paperwork, so...
Yeah, you know, and post our discussion, it was on Saturday or Sunday, you know, I had taken a few moments to reflect upon that, and you know, as it stands now, the face of the garage, which is where I'd like this to be consistent with, is already set back four feet from the front of the house to the face of the house.
Right.
So, you know, I think that that'll help to, to give it, you know, so it's not such a long stretch of building materials regardless if it's a house or a fence.
Would it be possible to move the fence back six or 12 inches so that it was not flush with the front of the house, so that there was a little bit of variety instead of a straight continuous wall from house to house?
So as it stands now, the front of the house is offset from the face of the garage by four feet. Are you proposing to set it back a few inches behind the face of the garage?
I guess in theory then it wouldn't be a flat continuous pane, that there might be a little bit of a jog or variety in it.
Yeah, there's a, there's a concrete pad or bricks that are behind it or where it would be now as well as a garden, and I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, to pushing that back a little bit, you know, but to go further than a foot and a half to two feet, that would require extensive work.
So you'd be okay if we said a foot and a half back or a foot, foot and a half?
Yeah, you know, again, looking at the, looking at the plans, I think a foot and a half is reasonable, yeah.
Okay, that'd be nice.
I might be confused, but I thought that in looking at the picture of the fence that you've attached to the survey, it looks to me like there's boards in the front that are spaced apart from each other, that are mounted to horizontal boards in the back.
Yep.
Are there other vertical boards on the other side of the fence?
Yeah, and they would be offset.
All right.
So again, if you're facing it, you would receive privacy, but from either side, you'd be able to see through.
All right, I thought you could, from this, it looked like you could see through those gaps, but there's going to be a board on the other side, so there'll be, the air and stuff can get through, but it will be a privacy fence.
Yeah, if you, if you were standing at 12 o'clock, it would look, it would look continuous, however, from either angle, you know, say three or nine o'clock, you'd be able to see through at a 45.
Yeah, it's a board on board.
Board on board, yeah. Held it from the picture.
But it's skellet at the top.
Yeah. All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application?
My name is Bruce Winter and I live at 183 and I am in favor with this.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is that the neighbor that plans on putting the fence continuing across?
No, actually the opposite side.
The opposite side, okay, all right. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Does anyone wish to talk about fences, garden setbacks? Okay, well, we will close the, that case and move on to the next case on our agenda.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1507-11. Upon the matter of request by Barbara Wook for an area variance to install a six-foot-high stockade fencing inside yard exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 129 Spruce Lane in an R1 residential district.
Hello, I'm Barbara Winock, 129 Spruce Lane.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Basically, I'm requesting, I want to put a fence in along the side of my yard and have us, have it to be, have it be six foot along the side of the house, and I understand normally it's four feet. The reason for that is basically due to the neighbors. There's an unsightly lack of upkeep along the property next to me. They have broken windows and a lot of parties and basketball playing and kids that are up till midnight and two, and I know that's not going to, the fence isn't going to deter the noise, but I need to create a boundary between my house and their house. Right now, the way the houses are situated, my bedrooms sit right along their driveway because their garage is set back, so it kind of creates a nice little nook for them, that's nowhere they gather and such, but I guess basically I just need to have a boundary there. You know, because when nighttime comes and it's time to go to sleep and the basketball playing is still going on, again, maybe if the, if the fence is there, maybe they'll move the hoop closer to the, closer to the sidewalk or such. Another reason is a lot of times their garbage is in my backyard because they have the garbage tote, you know, right between the two, you know, so I'm back there picking, cleaning things that aren't mine. Those are my basic reasons.
I have to agree with you on the, on the one side, they're very close, very close. The other side's not bad.
Right.
But as I look down that, that close side, I, it was a little difficult to see, it was getting kind of late yet last night. As I look down, I see open space, but then I thought I saw like a hedge about three-quarters of the way back or something. Is that part of the...
That's, that's on my property and that's something that just happened the other day too. There's bushes that are basically, I just bought the house last fall, so I'm in the process of making a lot of changes. So there's a big row of bushes that you saw going in the back, and there's bushes in there and there are trees, and with putting a fence in, all those bushes are going to have to come out, so I'm going to have to pay to get rid of everything that's overgrown back there, which is fine because I think a fence is going to be a much cleaner, much more modern look as opposed to just this overgrown forest that's back there. Just as an aside, the other day, the neighborhood, the neighbor went over there with his chainsaw and started hacking all those bushes, so right now they're even in worse shape than they were because he started cutting off the tops when I had given him permission just to clean up what's on his side of the, on his yard. And when I realized what he was doing, I went out there and I said, what, you know, I said you could clean up your side, not everything, and so he stopped midway. So now I have this row of hedges that's halfway been cut and then the other half that's still overgrown, so I'm hoping to get the fence in as soon as possible just to get rid of that, that whole mess.
You've got a situation there, yeah.
I have a situation, yes.
I just want to make sure I'm reading your map correctly. In front of your house, you're not going to have a six-feet-high six-foot-high fence?
No.
It's going to be three or three and a half?
Yes, and I'm even debating whether I'm going to even have that three and a half or there, but yeah, the fence would end at, right at the front of the house, and we're thinking that we would have a gate, you know, that it would wrap around to the front of the house and have like a gate that would open in the front, just for lawn mowing reasons and that kind of thing.
If it did wrap around to the front of the house, so between the, yeah, would you want it to be six feet high or could that be four feet high?
I would prefer that that also be six feet high.
And that would be a gate, though?
And I'm thinking that would be a gate, yes.
Just like we spoke in the previous one, and you and I spoke a little earlier tonight, and I understand the reasoning for the height, and I understand like where the bedroom windows are?
Right.
And the corner of the house. Is it possible to set the, how, the fence that's going to be gated and the fence that's facing the street, can you set that back like Bradley had mentioned earlier on the last gentleman, set it back a foot and a half or so so it wouldn't look like a straight wall off the corner of your house, so that you've got, so that you've got a break?
A little bit of a break, maybe about a foot, because again, it would depend on how close it would get to that first bedroom window.
Right, and again, it should be about a three-foot, four-foot section. The other thing too is you've got that large, although you'd probably remove that, but that large bush on the corner.
The bush is going to go as well.
Okay, because that could stay if you set the fence back a little bit, but...
Yeah.
That's up to you, it's your house.
I think, yeah, I think if we, if this does get approved, I would be willing obviously to have it go back about a foot and that bush would go. Yeah, it's, it's big and overgrown anyway. Everything is overgrown in that yard.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And I believe that's the last case that was on our agenda, and before we take a break, I have to apologize because I overlooked two things by getting here right on the dot of 7:00, and the first was that I wanted to welcome Brad Huber as a member of the board, and nice to have you with us.
To be here, thank you.
And I understand you're...
Alternate?
Alternate, yes.
Yes.
While Mr. Evans is out of town.
That's correct.
Well, thank you for your willingness to serve, and also wanted to thank Mr. Weatherby for his service. I understand he will be departing from the town's employ in the near future, and we wanted to thank you for working with us, and we do still need that training on animals that you thought I was kidding about when you first joined us.
I'll make sure that we continue to push for the animal training.
Thank you.
And I've truly enjoyed working with each and every board member. This has been a pleasure.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We will take a break of 15 minutes. We'll come back at quarter to nine.
Two volumes, I think, that were passed down that probably appear to have around a thousand pages or more of information. The planning board has had this under consideration for many and many of their meetings and have looked at this. I would, without relying upon the planning board to do what we need to do, I would simply move that we incorporate into our findings and adopt the findings that were made by the planning board in 2010 and reaffirmed by them, I believe it was in June of this year, and that we determine that the plans, that the application that's being submitted to us, because it does not in any way, shape, or form vary any of the actual things that are going to take place at the property, does not have a negative environmental impact, and that we should proceed to determine the application without the need for any further environmental considerations or mitigation, as all of that has already been reviewed and done.
I'll second with the modification that we referenced, the planning board's resolution from December 21st, 2009.
That's the one I want to incorporate with it. I think it's five pages with eight pages attached as an appendix, eh? Something like that.
Yeah, and the resolution number handy, if we want to reference that.
Sure, the resolution number is?
PB zero...
Counsel?
Zero eight, zero five, dash, one.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the seeker motion carries seven votes in favor and no opposed.
And that same certification, just to clarify, needs to mimic the same certifications that are found in the planning board, including that the weight and balance relevant environmental, it weighs and balances the relevant environmental impact, certifying that the requirements...
We're incorporating all that by referencing to our findings, so that Michelle will type it all out.
Beautiful.
But we don't have to read it.
Yes.
Sorry, Michelle. You can cut and paste.
So, all the resolutions regarding the seeker findings would be incorporated as the ZBA spendings as well.
And then I would make a motion that we approve the variance with the finding, following findings. The variance that's being requested constitutes a significant deviation from the town's site capacity worksheet, which normally might not meet with the approval of this board. However, the subdivision has been extensively reviewed by the planning board and was approved six years ago, five and a half years ago, and the, what had been approved at that time is not anything different than what we're being asked to approve tonight. And it's being divided into two lots from one due to considerations of financing and legal technicalities and requirements in order to be able to move forward with the development. And anyone who believes that by granting this, we are not taking the town's site capacity worksheet as an integral part of the town code would be mistaken, and it does, this, our action with respect to this application should not in any way, shape, or form be construed as setting any policy or pattern that we would follow in the future, other than for a project that was previously approved five or six years ago, to which no significant changes are being made. And if that didn't fit the category, then what we're doing tonight would not be any precedent. The other finding would be that the planning board has examined this project in great detail, and they have, by granting the approval of the subdivision, have determined that the benefits of this development outweigh any negative impact that it might have upon the neighborhood in which it is located, and therefore, we approve of the variance that would allow it to move forward, hopefully to completion, by taking it from one parcel into two. Does anyone want to second that?
Second.
Do we want to make the correction on the top sheet for the 45 units and the nine units for a total of 54?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's for 54 units, not 53.
Yep.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're all present. Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, no one is absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good night. The next case for which the applicant is still present is 75 Echo Hill Drive. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? Seeing none, I will make a motion that we approve the application for 75 Echo Hill Drive, subject to the following conditions. First, the approval will be limited to a period of four years, with the condition that the applicant will be required to secure, identify and secure any and all permits that may be required in order to proceed with the intended construction of the coop that would be added on to the shed, existing shed in the rear of the property. Another condition is that the applicant will have to provide on at least an annual basis to the town a certificate from a veterinarian indicating that the veterinarian has examined the animals and has found them to be in good health and free from any communicable or other illness that would pose any danger to any persons in the neighborhood, or to other animals. Another condition would be that the applicant will allow the town to conduct an assessment of the chickens and the coop within six months to a year of granting the permit, and are there other conditions that... Oh, and the existing chicken coop will be removed as soon as possible after completion, and that the applicant will include in the final design an area of a suitable size for the four chickens to be able to run outside that will be fenced or otherwise enclosed in a manner to ensure that the chickens remain on the inside of the fence and everything else remains on the outside of the fence.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May you clarify the number of hens within that motion?
Four. Four hens, no additional hens beyond the lives and being at this time. So if one of the hens should pass away next year, there would be for three hens, unless the applicant returned to get approval for additional hens. It's limited to the four that are there now.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Did I miss anything?
No, I just think we should reiterate the fact that people need to come to the town to get permits before they get the hens. These are a year old, and also to build what seems to be quite a big chicken coop in the backyard without permission, without permits. They need to make sure it's done prior to, please.
And since this is a special use permit as opposed to a variance, it is, we don't have the same factors to consider, because this is a special use permit where the town has already made a determination that this use is not incompatible with the neighborhood, but has provided for special use permit in order that we can impose conditions that would be appropriate to the location of the specific use, which is why we have those conditions. Any other discussion or comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? And we all continue to be present. Motion carries, six votes in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, no members are absent. The next item on the agenda for which an applicant appears to be present is 240 Pine Hill Drive. This is also a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does someone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request for a variance at 240 Pine Hill Drive with the following findings. First of all, what he's looking for is not going to change the character of the neighborhood. There is no alternative that he could do, except not do it. It wouldn't require a variance because of the limited size of the lot. It's not a great, large request. This is a pretty, a pretty small request, actually. The 10-foot setback variance is, look at how much room he's got to work there. It's a reasonable request, and put it that way. There'll be no effect on the physical or environmental conditions. It's not that, it's not that complicated. He's just getting a deck together and improving the living conditions of his backyard, and it's not really self-created, because it is what it is. I mean, you have a, you buy a certain piece of property, and that's what it is. You don't necessarily create a smaller piece of property, so he's dealing with the situation the best way he can. And with that in mind, that's, all these things, I move that we approve it.
Second.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We all continue to be present. Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we're all still here. The next item, or case, for which an applicant is present is 23 Winchester Road. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does someone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion on 23 Winchester Road. I think we should grant the motion for the setback variance. The, I don't believe that the, it will hurt the character of the neighborhood. I think it will enhance the character of the neighborhood. Alternative solutions, obviously not to put a porch on there, but I think they would enjoy it and help with their growing family. And in my opinion, it's not a substantial variance. It is a self-created problem in the fact that they want a little more living space in their home along with a porch. I think we should approve it based on the criteria.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
By the way, it looks good.
Yeah, it does look good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed. We continue to all be present. Next application relates to 193 Floral Drive. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
This is the...
This is the fence.
Right. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the variance with one exception, that we, the front facing the road should be set back a foot and a half. The gentleman did agree with that. I think aesthetically, it would look more pleasing to the eye. It's also going to be about a foot and a half back on the neighbor's house corner, and again, aesthetically, it would look a little nicer. I'm not in big favor of the six-foot high, but because it is a scallop-style fence, it does have a board-on-board scallop look to it. It is a good-looking fence, and I, I don't think it'll hurt the character of the neighborhood. Alternative solution is not to grant it and to move it further back, but I think the purpose of the hiding his camper behind that fence is the reason, one of the reasons he's doing it. I don't believe it's a substantial issue. It's not going to hurt the environment, and yes, it is self-created because he wants a new fence. Then again, it isn't, because the old fence is getting deteriorated. So based on that, I think we should approve it.
I'll second.
Joe seconded.
Joe seconded. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We continue to all be present. I believe that concludes all of the cases for which the applicants are present. So going back to the top of the agenda, I believe the first case would be 101 Sea Cliff. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I'd make a motion that we approve the, we grant the variance as applied for, based on the following findings, that there will be no change to the neighborhood, considering the fact that it's been there for over 20 years. There really is no alternative solution to cover up that retaining wall. It will not have any impact on the environment. It is not a substantial request. Again, it is covering the retaining wall, and the situation is not self-created in that they purchased the property when the retaining wall was there.
I'd second that. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We continue to all be present. Next application with respect to 70 Fair Lawn Drive. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request with the following findings. This would not change the character to the neighborhood, in the neighborhood, with a possible exception that it's going to make it nicer. It's a very nice plan. And with what he wants to do with it, there is really no variance, or there are no alternatives that would not require the variance. And it's not substantial variance, it's only five feet. So, small, a small request would not have any physical or environmental effect on the conditions of the neighborhood, and is it self-created? In this case, it is, because this is something that he wants to take on as a project, but to improve his, his home living conditions, and I think that's certainly justified.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we continue to all be present.
That's another one that looks good.
Yes.
Yes, it does.
There's a lot of people doing a lot of good work to their houses.
I am proud of everybody.
Nice to see that.
It is nice to see.
158 Hermontage Road is the next case for which an applicant was present but is no longer present, and this is a type-two action for seeker purposes as well. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the request for variance. I think that there's certainly no undesirable change to the neighborhood. It's simply widening the driveway, and it needs about a two-foot variance to do that. It's, I guess you could say it's self-created, because he wants a wider driveway, but it's his only option to do so. There really isn't any other feasible means to achieve what he's trying to do. So I recommend we approve it.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We continue to all be present. Next application for which the applicant was present but has left is 68 Parkside Crescent. This is also a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does some, anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the variances of the, do we have to do these all separately? The driveway going up to the lot line, based on the center curb that's at the lot line right now from the neighbor's driveway, I don't believe it'll have any effect in, as far as environmentally. Also, is there another solution? No. I mean, is driveway really is up to that curb now? It just is crushed stone as opposed to pavement. And also, the width, the very tight driveways in that neighborhood between those houses. Alternative solution, there really isn't any. Again, it's not substantial. It is self-created, because he wants to do a new driveway all the way back, which is the house is in need of one. Will it hurt the character of the neighborhood? No, it won't. I don't believe it'll help it. It'll make the house look nicer. The side yard fence is the second part of the, of the variance. He did say that the part that is on top of the, the part of the fence that goes along the top of the curb, he is going to lower it approximately six to seven inches, so that it will be six-foot high. It does not come all the way out to the front of the house. It is set back about 10 feet, just in front of his doorway. So aesthetically, it looks better than bringing it all the way out to the front corner of the house. Again, I don't think it hurts the character of the neighborhood. The alternative solution is to have that four feet going back. However, I think it does look uniform, bringing it all the way up the way he is at that side of the house. Is it substantial? I don't believe it is substantial. And will it affect the environment? No, it will not. And is it self-created? Yes, it is. But again, he is beautifying an older home that he bought recently, and he is doing a nice job at it.
I'd like to second, but with the additional requirement that the two posts that are near the street are like 10 feet tall...
Yeah, he's going to cut those down.
But that he has to cut those down.
Yes, yeah, the top of the posts are cut down to match the...
The height of the variance.
Height of the, yeah, the height of the fence, so that it doesn't look awkward. Also, the last variance out of the group was a five-foot-high gate that's going to go across the driveway. And again, I don't think it hurts the character of the neighborhood. The alternative solution is to bring it down to four foot. Again, I don't think that's necessary. I don't think it's a substantial amount. It's environmentally not going to hurt anybody, and it is a self-created problem. He has a little dog that's a good jumper, and he thinks he wants to keep that dog in the yard, and he thinks five feet will be okay.
I'll second all of those.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no opposed, no abstentions, and we are all still present. The last case on our agenda for which an applicant appeared and is now no longer present is 129 Spruce Lane. This also is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application, realizing that she has a very difficult situation there, and this seems to be the best solution to it. It's a six-foot-high fence. It's, it's a long fence, but I'm trying to think of how we put it. She would actually not bring it out to the exact front of her house. She would move it back about a foot and a half.
Well, she wants, she wants to bring it out, but I think that's what we need to discuss, make it set back.
Foot and a half or so.
Yep.
From the front edge of the house.
Did she have a window or something?
Well, there was a bedroom window that we were concerned about.
Concerned about.
There's no sense in moving it back further than the window. That's the reason to have the fence in the first place.
Right.
As far as possible change in the neighborhood, there might be a little, but it'll be, it'll be reasonable. When you have a long fence like that, it's going to show up. But I think in her case, it's about the best she can do, and by moving it back a foot and a half will help offset it. There is no alternative that we can come up with that would not require a variance in this case, because she needs that privacy. Is it substantial? Yes, it's fairly substantial, but that's the nature of this request. In order to work for her, it's going to have to be somewhat substantial. But it will not have an effect on the physical or environmental conditions. It's just a fence. And is it self-created? I don't think it is, because she recently purchased the property, and she moved into a neighborhood that is what it is, and she's going to deal with it, and she's willing to do what she has to do. So on that, based on those findings, I move we approve.
I think I saw Mr. Huber second that motion, correct?
I'll second that motion.
All right.
Was that before I got done?
No, it was just as you were finishing.
Oh, okay.
Are we, are we going with setting it back a little bit, or are we staying even then?
I had that setback one and one and a half, one to one and a half feet from the front line of the house, still to be west of the first window, as the condition.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no, no opposition, nobody abstained, and we are all still present. We have a new category of case, that is, the case where no applicant appeared and nobody's still present. That would be 45 Beach Terrace, which is a type-two action for seeker purposes. I would move to table the application until such time as the applicant can arrange to be present and explain, answer any questions and explain the application to the board.
And also, just to add, if you wanted to hold open the public hearing portion, at least until next month, to give them the opportunity to come, the town wouldn't have to re-notice it.
Hold that open as well. Table and hold open.
Second.
Second, who seconded that? Mr. Paulino? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We all continue to be present. We have two other matters that we need to take up at this time. First, everyone should have received with your packets of information the minutes, proposed minutes from the June meeting, June 1st of this year. Did everyone receive the minutes?
Yes.
All right. And did everyone have a chance to look them over? Did anyone have any additions or corrections that they felt should be made? Seeing none, I would move that we approve the minutes from the June 1st meeting. All those in, is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have one abstention, Mr. Huber, because he wasn't present, and Mr. Evans is not present, so the motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, and one abstention. The last item is a notice from the Town Planning Board concerning 160 Denzmore Road, dated June 30th. The seeker review at its June 22nd, 2015 meeting. The Aroncoy Planning Board declared its intent to serve as lead agency under State Environmental Quality Review Act for the review of a proposed 12.69-acre subdivision at 160 Denzmore Road. The project involves the creation of a 63-lot clustered subdivision. Part one of the project's full environmental assessment form is enclosed. If anyone wants to review that, it's available here. Pursuant to Section 617.6, the Aroncoy Planning Board is requesting consent from all interested and involved agencies to serve as the seeker lead agency for this project. Any objections should be made in writing to the attention of the Town Aroncoy Planning Board within 30 days of the date of this notice. Concurrent with the planning board's intent to serve as lead agency can be expressed by providing your signature below and returning the signed letter by July 30th, 2015. I would make a motion that we authorize me... I would make a motion that we authorize me as chairman to execute the letter concurrent with their determination to be the lead agency for this purpose.
And to recall, Chairman, this is the, this board asked the planning board to be lead agency.
Oh, I recall that, yes.
Just wanted to make sure we're, if anyone who didn't recall.
We let it back, though.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then I am signing the letter now. And we'll turn it in well in advance of the June 30th deadline. And with that, I believe we are concluded and we are adjourned.